For July seventeenth, twenty twenty three, we are present here in forum and. As published as well in forum with the Stark County Commissioners. Um, just a couple of quick housekeeping items. Um, we have this ordinance before us. Yeah, why don't, yeah, why don't we? Yeah, we didn't do that one. Yeah, but I have the meeting minutes before me from June nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty three. If somebody would like to move or speak towards those.
I'll make motion if you approve them as.
We have a motion from Todd to approve as is. Is there a second, second from Kay? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, all this after Cassie, you're gonna be the last one. So you're in charge of making sure those get back to our esteemed auditor. Um, so while you're, while you're passing that around, um, I'll just, I want to put a little framework around this.
Yeah.
Um, several of us. As always, we're, um, president at the four H, uh, fair this year. Um, and. Several of us were approached, um, and, and by many different parties, just that there might be an opportunity to. Um, come out with something better and something bigger. Um. Some of our discussions started from, uh, obviously we've got some funding coming in such as solar funds, for example. Um, maybe there's an opportunity to start improving some of the things that we all share together as well. So like, you know, that's. You know, uh, been part of the discussion in the past as well, but I think some of the short term, you know, issues that the council. Has become more aware of is maybe, maybe there might be some better opportunity for, um. Communication, uh, between all those involved. Um, we obvi- we obviously know that there's a land dispute that's going on that, you know, seems like it would be nice to get that taken care of and maybe consider possibly some further land acquisition as things time goes on. Um, uh, make our, uh, fair better. But, you know, and just concerns about the, the quality of the fair itself, the attendance, uh. Charge in the midway, like I, there's a whole list of things, but. The thing that comes to mind first between the council commission, Don, and I spent quite a bit of time talking about this and. Um, spoke to Mark as well, didn't get a chance to talk to Charlie as much because Charlie been obviously busy farming the things, but. Um, during the fair, uh, I should say, um, we did speak a little bit and I did see Charlie. Um. You know, but the, the, the important thing is for us is that, you know, we, we like to stay in our own lane and we're all involved with so many boards and things already as it is. But the thing that was drawn to our attention from state representatives was, hey. Like you've got, like they heard it. They heard all these people that had different concerns. You know, Don and I, you know, we were standing there and the, uh, state representatives, um, actually said, you know, you guys, the council, you guys fund them. So why don't you take a more active role and be able to, you know, help with this cohesiveness and. You know, creating this, this better product. I mean, it's the one thing that we all share. I mean, the Met Festival is great, the Yellowstone Trail, the other festivals that we have, but really the big one is for each fair. But, um, obviously since we don't have any board participation, then it's kind of hard for us to, uh, represent to the public that we are doing anything or making any headway or anything. We got to vote. When voting time comes around, but, um. At least on behalf of the council, um, and I, and I think the commissioners share this, you know, obviously they'll speak as well, but. I think for one thing, we'd like to see that, um. That we can have a board presence and more involvement, um, in the fair and what goes on with the fair so that we can answer to the public and our constituents. And also maybe have some input when it comes time for everybody putting their hands together to have a better product. Um. And then we'd also, you know, I, and I don't, I don't think we can do all the heavy lifting tonight. It's great to see so many people here from different aspects. I don't see Mr. Jurnis here, but I spoke with him earlier and I, and I, you know, I know that, uh, you know, he's in, in big support of that. Uh, I, I. I think Mrs. Jurnis is here. But I will say that in the last two weeks since we brought this up, because, you know, I came, I, I talked to Justin about it. Uh, I came to Rachel and said, you know, I think we can, you know, we can get something started here to have some rhetoric. Again, our state representatives thought it was a, a, a really good idea. Um, so I've gotten a lot of calls since then. A lot of people in support. This, this, the intention of this meeting is not to throw darts at anybody or criticize anybody. It's more, how can we all come to the table together? Produce a better product, you know, get more, you know, more thrills, you know, more people to attend, you know, more cohesiveness when the decision making part comes. So. I'll move down, uh, the road with my colleagues and. Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. Why don't we have the, the leadership, the, the presidents come on up and I, I know, Mr. Binkley, you're representing tonight the council side and then. We have the four eight. But we could have the council representative and then also a, uh.
What is our current, uh? Contribution to the, to the county fair?
You give twelve thousand five hundred to the fair board. And that's been going on since two thousand twelve. I can't go back farther than.
Well, we, we were even higher than that back in the nineties.
Yeah. Um, and then six thousand dollars in two thousand twelve went through the four H council, but then every year since two thousand twelve, it's been ten thousand.
Yeah.
And I'm glad you asked that too, Bruce, because I think there's a lot of interest or just, you know, wondering, you know, like obviously when we fund something. I have a lot of people asking me, what does that money get spent on? You know, I've been hearing things about the rabbit farm needs this or this needs that, this need that. We have a land dispute. I don't have those answers. And, you know, again, if we had a representative on the board, we would do that better as well. So, um.
Well, I would think that. I mean, if we're going to continue to, to help fund it.
Yeah.
We ought to be able to see what things are being spent.
Oh, I agree. I mean, we've done that to other boards, for example, skills, you know, other organizations, we. Requested that and, you know, continued the funding, but we also have representation as well with commission and council. You have some thoughts? I agree. I know Howard, you, you've been intimately involved with four H over the years as well and shared, you know. Interest, you know, interest in us, you know, trying to improve.
Yeah, somehow I got invited to one fair board meeting two years ago. I don't know how.
Probably the annual meeting.
Must have been that.
The annual meeting is, yeah, it's a, a bigger meeting.
Yeah.
One commission, one council.
And I know I even, I voted. For the president at that time. And I don't know how. I don't know how. How I was able.
President or membership?
Oh, it was membership. It was membership.
With Roger, his name, Roger.
To be a, to be a member.
Yeah, to be a member, yes, to be a member.
I, I think actually you get to go up to you names, I think.
It depends on how many you're up.
Oh, yeah.
How many are, many are up for real?
But I, I was never really sure. You know, if there, if there, there evidently is not a designated member of, of the council, it is.
How can we legally? How fund that without representation? We thought we were in a situation with other, other.
We've been doing some housekeeping on that. Four H board was one area that we haven't, and you know, I think this really didn't come to light.
Yeah, we're right.
Well.
We're not talking about. Or, or the four H council. We're talking, if we're going to help fund that. By law, we are supposed to have some kind of representation, and I don't think we've ever had, not, not in my life, not in my.
Point. I think it should be both, maybe just not the same person, because I have heard. I'm just going to tell you, like, I don't know if it's which board is or both boards, but it sounds like maybe there's some mixed representation. It sounds like there's some nepotism. I mean, the other thing that we've done with other boards is made recommendations also. Um, we've, it's not pushing on it. We've done it with other boards, but looking at the members of the board to make sure that. Those members are chosen correctly. That, you know, like there's some board turnover, you know, other things like that as well. So, I mean, again, if we're participating, then we can help make those recommendations, but. You know, I, I'll be the first to know. I'm really in the dark. I just, you know, as a council person, I probably should have paid.
Were there the husband or wife?
Something like that, or, or maybe sometimes, uh. If they're two different entities, one person is on both boards. I think after that's happened before, I. I don't think that that's a sound.
Well, I want to, when you get a chance, Dave, I want to talk to them. I know most all, all you guys in here that are concerned with the four H program and is a great big part of my life for a lot, a lot of years and, and. Our, our, we're not here to take your money away from you. We're not here to do that. And, you know. My experience of the fair, Ben, there's a couple other than just. That are just as experienced as me, or if not more, Donnie and Bruce got more seniority in the fair than me. He, there's always this side, there's this side, this needs to be done, that needs to be done. Why isn't this done? Why isn't that done? And, and some of us, some of it's good and some of it's bad, some needs to be done, some, some doesn't. And, and I know that. In my experience, you, you have to work with a budget and you have, you know, I, I, a few years ago, but. But you, a couple of years before, I, my daughter got out of four H. They, they went through that cattle barn and made it a beautiful barn, probably the one of the nicest cattle show barns in state of Indiana, in my opinion, far across sides of county fair. So there is, and, and when years ago, when I was getting out of four H, they went through and made some really state of the art. Uh, swine pens. So, uh, there, there is upkeep and. In the last few years, I've kind of lost, uh, touch. But we're, I think from speaking for us, we're not here to take your money. But we do hear some. Questions from different people, why this is happening, why it's not happening, and it's probably happening, most of it for the good. But we don't necessarily know how to answer that. I, I, I'm, I'm trying to put it out there.
Yeah.
And. For the rest of the council that don't understand, the, the four, the fair board and the four H council is two different entities. And, and, and Julia, you correct me if I'm wrong. The, I sat on the council for many years and enjoyed it. The council. Sort of is in control of the four H program, but please correct me if I'm wrong. Right. Right. And their funding purchases ribbons, which. Ribbons are very expensive. I mean, they were fifteen years ago when I was, ribbons, um. Different programs, um. The, the fair board and the council. Are both valuable and they're, but they are two different entities. And typically, you know, I, when I remember the, uh, the council consisted of some leaders and some parents and some town business people. And it was separate than the fair board. So I just wanted to put that out there and, and, and from my aspect. I certainly don't want to take your money away because you need the money. I would just, i- if we can work it out where we'd have. A member of the, a member of the board, member of the council commissioners. Doesn't particularly matter to me who, that would be. Participate and be involved so we could go back to the community when we're, when we're faced with questions. And, and be better to answer them. That's, that's what I have to say. And, and, and the barn, for instance, well, guess whose name is on the plaque in that barn in there? My dad's. So.
On the commercial building?
Yeah, no, on the barn, barn that's. Property.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, I've got. I mean, I got a personal, a pride issue because I live in Hamlin, it's in Hamlin and.
Right.
Along with Tim, I mean. It's something to keep the kids out of trouble. At least for part of the time. And, yeah, I like, I agree with Howard. I'm not here in any means to fund anything. We need to make four H program grow.
Just that we know.
That's basically my point.
Yeah.
Is, is the four H fair is a direct reflection on Stark County, whether you like it or you don't. And, and that's just the facts about it. Uh, to the four H council. Now each one of the members now have to pay so much for the books and all of that stuff, right? So each member offsets part of the cost of the program. Is that not true?
Remember that the program fee that they paid at fifteen dollars that, um. The house paid for comes back for professional development for insurance. That's a big part of insurance.
So.
The four H council actually pays for the, in the annuals.
So the kids are helping to fund it too.
Yes.
Honestly. Now, we as a council, and I'm going back thirty years ago. We helped, uh, we were responsible for a third of the extension cost. Is that, is that still the way it is now? Where Purdue took care of two thirds, and I think the county is, was about a third back in the day.
Well, we house, we house the.
Yes.
You know, them as well and plus also the funding.
So, so we've got, we've got investments here. So. And I'll, and I'll shut up.
Well, well, no, you make a great point too.
I, I got, I got two points.
Extension also.
One point is, is the, the county fair is a direct reflection on Stark County, whether you like it or not. And two, I think that, and Justin could tell us, I think we are probably. We need to have representation because we are funded. Is that correct or not correct?
It depends on each, each board. I don't really look it up specifically with regard to, but it is a good idea, just for purpose.
I don't want to get, I don't, I don't want to get.
It's a good idea.
So that's my two points. I'll shut up.
Two, we had a five percent increase in, in four H members from twenty two to twenty three, we had an eight percent increase.
My opinion on that, Dave, on the representative, I wouldn't mind being a part of it, but I wouldn't want to be on the board. These guys, gentlemen, women. Five or six weeks a year. Of their own time to keep the fair going. So, I mean, I can't do it. Physically, or I can't, I don't mind doing my, uh. Like speaking or being at meetings in whatever form. But they do a lot of work. On it, you know what I mean? I did, I don't have six weeks a year to. Health keeps it there. Each board member is supposed to do so much of the fair. One does mow and one does gates, whatever, you know. And that's the only part I don't know about these two people. The commissioners, I want my need.
I don't see where it would have to be one of us physically. I don't want any part of it. But there's no reason why we can't appoint somebody.
Right.
To represent us.
I would like to be a part of it, but I like.
Right.
Him.
I would love to be there.
Yeah.
We were just counseling.
Well, I, I think we're talking about, if we could all three, because we do, we do, uh, pay Julie a lot, you know, uh, Purdue a lot. We pay for the housing. I mean, but, I mean, that is what it is. I mean, you know, but as far as I counsel and board, I think we're talking about both. Separate person, I, I think to Don's point, I think it's. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said it just to be like for us, we do appoint people too. We don't always sit on the board. A council commissioner person or their.
Okay, good.
Proxy or a.
It wouldn't have to be one of us, Donnie, and we can appoint somebody.
I feel like a council might be able to find.
What your argument was.
What way? How does that make you purpose?
If you're just pointing some, uh, I'm going to say random. I know it won't be random, but you're going to appoint just some. Person from the community.
Speaking, we have a council right now, we will participate. We're all, we have seven, we'll get two people that do it.
Well, we, yeah, we, like, like you said, we are an active board. I think it would have to go to our meeting. And discuss that further, but. Meetings are open. And you're welcome to just spend. An hour once a month instead of six or seven weeks.
So when you guys normally vote on your, um, decisions though, I mean.
Uh, what, what decisions are you?
I mean, like we have a meeting and we make motions and we vote, you don't move on it.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, we want to be part of that.
Excellent. That's going to be a, a.
I mean, but, yeah, I'm just saying, we, we did this with skill, we did this with the, um, development foundation. We're pretty much done that with everybody that we fund. And to Bruce's point, we want, we want.
You have somebody. On every board that, to go in and fund that.
That we do, we do.
Yes. Yeah, and, and quite honestly, I, I think from a legal standpoint. I, I, I think we need to have representation. I'll tell you, I, I, and I know all of you, most of you. And you all have been dedicated to Amy family for one thing. I, I know how you're dedicated, but sometimes you need new blood. I, I know how you're dedicated, but sometimes you need new blood. To come in. I'm just telling you, that, that's one of the things that, that is said around the fair. And thank God, my granddaughter's got one more year, and I don't have to put up with it till she has young ones. But it doesn't hurt to have new blood.
I, I don't disagree with that.
There you go.
And every year, there's, three of us are up. New members are eligible to come on. So if. If one of those spots happens to be a council member, then we've killed two burns with one son there.
The, the bottom line is, is there's two ways to go with it, I mean, um. Either, I, I think from the side of the council, we're saying we don't have representation. If we're going to fund, you don't, if you decide you don't need our money, then you don't have.
Can you define representation? So that has to be a change in the bylaws. Which would take multiple meetings.
I think I've got a voting spot.
We have a voting spot on, on. What I'm saying is, we wanna be on board, yeah. The voice.
Or somebody. Or somebody that. Wouldn't, wouldn't particularly be one of us, because we don't.
Point, my preference is that.
Me, that would be. Just appoint somebody that's not part of your council. Which is your party, that you are getting complaints from the community. So now you gotta go through a third party again.
I was, and I'm telling you, we've got a lot of complaints, a lot, and.
About what?
I'm sorry. Lack of, uh, participation in the midway, the price of the midway. Um, you know, I, you, you name it, like, there's just tons of things, like, and not all of it can be helped with money, but I mean, if we're gonna help with someone with money. I mean, that's the other thing too, is, is what I'm trying to tell you is that. We have things that are coming to Stark County for economic development, sure. And I'm gonna speak to it, because I've taken a lot of that heat because of, uh, the solar money coming in. We, we're looking for things to fund with that. But we, as Bruce pointed out, and other, as commissioners have pointed out, if we're gonna fund things, we wanna participate in it. The fair. I, I'm not, I'm not trying to be mean here, I don't wanna upset anybody, so I didn't wanna really draw this much out, but the fair needs improvement, it does.
And that's, that's every year since I've been a part of it, it needs improvement.
This year was, it, it was like a, it was a skeleton this year, it was, it's, it's the worst. I'm not trying, I see, I'm not, I'm not trying to.
Looked every year since our carnival retired in twenty twenty. We do a lot of research, we still do to this day.
Questioning your, we're not questioning your.
No, Plaski County is in the, Plaski County is a, a. Community voted board, like, I mean, ours is too, in a, in a way. But Plaski County is kind of what you're saying, there's people appointed.
Cause I, I think, I think, I, that's, that's a really good point. Because when people would say to us, cause I heard something today, what about Green? They've got a three-day festival, and they've got all these big rice, they got this big carnival, but. The guy that retired. Your carnival, I knew him, but I worked with him when I was fire chief, and I knew he would spend a full flood. And all that stuff, nobody was gonna buy and take that over, or do that, and I understand.
Festival compared to the year comparing us to. Don't own property. But they don't, Plaski County doesn't pay for the grounds. Dream and Fireman Fest, same thing, same. So if we could work on our budget without having to maintain, you know, however many acres we have there. Any insurance on it, right?
Understand, this is exactly what I'm talking about. About putting more money.
We just spent five hundred and some thousand on a fast lake, a couple hundred thousand over at, at Morchet's. We're not trying to take funding from you, we're trying to create something that Stark County could be.
The situation.
I don't know.
The, the something, the situation you just said we're talking about, and I've heard it too, not. terrible back complaint, well, why ain't there a carnival, well, you, I said, there's, well, you know, just like you, you said, the carnival retired, and they're. You said, you're sitting here telling us that you've been looking for a carnival, and I believe you. You're, you, you know too much about it, that you have, you've been looking for a carnival, come to the fair, I know you have, I know you have. Probably don't know it, a- and, you know, they, they come to me, and they said, well. Bruce or Todd or Howard, how come you don't have a carnival, how come they don't have a carnival fair? Well, I'm not real sure, but, but I'm, I'm sure they're looking, but, but, but I know you are, but. If, 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 I don't wanna take your money away from you, I love the four H program, I want it to build, and I want it to grow. Uh, that's where I stand, a- and. I would like to see. Somebody from, from the council or a representation. Of the council. Doesn't necessarily have to be one of us, it could be somebody that you accepted also. I mean, if you didn't think they were gonna work, I, I understand that.
If you appoint there, you want somebody on there. That's what I'm saying, not, not appointed, if you want somebody on there, you need them, and they can take one of the spots that's available, for sure, that's.
But we don't want to take your spots away either, that's, I don't wanna do that to you, cause you got, everybody's sitting out here hardworking on it, I know what.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that you're not allowed on, it's not up to me at all.
And like, and like what Howard said. I've heard that too about the carnival, and I really kind of knew the answer, but I didn't really say it.
He had a call, any of the members asked the question?
That's the problem, and the question comes back to me. It comes back to me, said, well, you guys funded, why don't you know?
Same for as far back as we can see. And that covers our insurance, our taxes. And, uh, I won't even say trash, cause once we've had trash in there, we're at like nineteen thousand. So, that's what that funds.
So, so a lot of, so what's, what's your total budget, and I, I thought our funding was a big part of your budget.
But it is a big part, it's appreciated, we're not, we're not. Yeah, we're, we're at sixteen thousand, just in trash, Nipco and insurance, you add in the lawn care, we jump to twenty thousand. I mean, you, I mean, you, it can go on, we had ads, auction checks, taxes. Uh, the restrooms, fire extinguishers, we're at twenty seven thousand, just for the necessities to have the fair, that's not the maintenance. We wanna do.
Not very many anymore.
Yeah, so that's what, that's our goal as well.
What is the auction? What is the commission off the auction bring in? Six to eight thousand as all?
That's what we work all year long. That's the point. So the auction is the fair boards. And then anything with the term four H. Is council and extension, we don't, we're not a four H fairboard, we provide the grounds and the buildings, and the insurance and the. Necessities to have the fair for the kids.
So I came into this a little, a little confused, because up until the week after the fair, I thought. I was led to believe the only direct payment county made to anyone involved with fair was. Simply to Purdue Extension, because we have the contract. This was news to me when, when we got other payments to the fair board. And. Which is another point of confusion as to, in my mind, as to why to exist as, as separate entities. Unless there's some other affiliation with. The extension.
That's a Purdue thing, it's not, okay.
The council and the board, well. That needs to be separate entities.
I get that, I, okay, I get that, but what, um. Then my question is, if we've got those two set. Separate entities, where does Purdue Extension? Act in that?
Four H council is one of, in Purdue Extension, we have Ag and Human Sciences and four H. So four H is one of our arms that reach out to the. Program and the community, so we have, like, with four H, we have a four H council who does the program planning. And provides a lot of opportunities for you throughout the year, like our extension homemakers, they work with, um, well, our Health and Human Sciences educator. Works with other groups too, as in our Ag educator.
So, so is the four H council like a quasi-part of you?
And it would be fair to say. That the. The fair board, the fair grounds, the fair, the fair grounds that the fair board controls and runs. Provides the grounds, the, the buildings and the resources for the four H program to exist. That, that's kind of the best way to, that's, you guys provide an area for the four H. Program to exist, I think that's the best way to explain it. Yeah, right, right, some people I don't think quite.
Just in the four H, we wanna make the fairgrounds better, so other entities will lease it and, and bring more revenue in for you as well. I mean, there's, there's other things, like, you know. Some of those other four H fairgrounds are a lot busier. You know, when other, other things.
So are the other counties.
I mean, why not start a, you gotta start something.
Well, the fair is getting a little bit bigger. But. That comes with a lot more. A lot more work and involvement, and we don't have the industry that, that St. Joe, that Cosiosco. Order and Lake, we don't have the industry they have.
We do have industry coming, that's what this meeting is about.
We've had Cisco coming, we've had, you know, I agree, I've been in touch with the solar, with the solar people, and. They're willing to help us out and. Give us a little bit of donation and. We're, we're working.
What are we doing, sounds like, sounds like we both wanna make this better, so why are, why are we not moving forward?
Well, I think the problem is, is that you don't want us to have any kind of representation.
I don't, I don't think that's it at all, I don't think. If, if one of you guys were on there as an active member. I don't think anybody would have a problem if the votes.
Agree, because I've kind of seen some of you guys' selections, I mean, you guys are pretty, pretty tight-knit, you're pretty well set up. Nah, you do. And I just think that if we're gonna be sticking money into something. We need direct representation, I, I just. And, and I'd be glad to give you guys a bunch more money, but we gotta have representation.
Why is, why is this the first time we've ever heard from anybody on the council?
Because we got three new people on the council, and you, we, we've quite honestly have some different, uh, state, uh. Regulations and things, I, I think, I think we're out of our wheelhouse by not having.
Honestly, it's just, it's just time, you know what, I, I, I'm gonna tell you, I've been on the council for a little while. I've turned my back on it, it's just, I, you know, at some point you do have to do something. So I'm gonna say, I, I'm guilty for being the first one to bring this up, but I heard all my council members, I've heard the commissioners. It's just not, you know, we should have done it ten years ago, I'm sorry for not speaking up, but I am now.
Pretty blunt. Hey, we're part of your program. I mean. Here we are.
A phone call would have been a start somewhere.
Beyond that, I mean, and this goes even further back than Bruce. Cause there are some nonprofits in Hamlin that helped. Acquire the land that there sits on, I feel that they're shut out of process now, even though the fair exists because of their contribution.
I'll, I'll, I'll speak on that a little bit. Because I don't, I guess I don't know a hundred percent their intention, but. When every single member of any program has a vote. That, that would be like our entire fair board. Deciding who's in charge of your council, so if. I know who's.
No, no, I think you're talking about a different one, I, I, and all that, I brought somebody that would. The American Legion, uh, I believe feels that they should have a seat on that board, is, is there?
I have to look at the bylaws, I really don't.
So I wanted to ask you tonight to look into, because I think the American Legion, I would do that.
Sure. Um, and I don't know that.
Is okay, did I mention that?
Sure, I mean, yeah, there are two. You were assuming I was talking about the Lions, I can't, I can't speak to the Lions, I'm not part of the Lions, and I don't know if there's anyone you're representing the Lions.
Sure, well, then I'll leave that. Sounds like that needs to be looked at, just to make sure that that's all legit too, I mean, I don't know enough about it, speak.
The other issue. Legion, I can talk, we. There was no changes, if they weren't on there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they were on there.
That was the fun thing, and let's go back to before I was part of the board. Um, you know, I have. I found a list from, I forget what, here in the sixties, that. Um. Mr. Hardesty went around soliciting contributions to acquire that land. Um, and then we. The American Legion post in Hamlin had a share of the. Um. Of the fair. And, and I had a little certificate, and I took that to the fair board, and was told it was worthless.
May I speak on that? That, when they acquired a property to the east. That was a. Community raised the money, everybody donated five hundred dollars, tax-free, and you, if you have that, uh, I mean. Interest-free, if you have that certificate, that's what it was, Mr. Harstey paid everybody back. Their five hundred dollars from the fair board. So there was two certificates, I, I know there was another one in Hamlin, that the fair board paid twice. Because Mr. Harstey did not collect a certificate, he took people on their honor, when he paid them back.
By the time I got there in, uh, twenty fourteen, it had all been forgotten.
Yeah, there's, we had a meeting, the fair board in their minutes. Will show where we paid the other five hundred dollars, Mr. Harstey was at the meeting, and he said, all of them have been paid off. So the Legion got their money back.
That's, that's fine, it's just. And that, but the, and it's a shame that that got forgotten. And that more current members. Feel that, you know, since that was dug up. Out of the archives. That, um. Because this came to a head when we, when, when, when the post tried to do something. Adjacent to. The fair and kind of got, uh. Run into a brick wall, and they were trying to coordinate with the Lions on advertising, and. And it really. Set off. A conflict between two organizations that are part of the fabric, as much a part of the fabric of Hamlin. As the fair.
Well, that was a beer garden, and I don't think we need a beer garden within two hundred feet of fair property. And we don't need to advertise on the fair grounds for a beer garden, that was an issue, is, issue, right?
Yeah, and, yeah, and I guess we have, we have a fundamental disagreement on that, because, I mean, it's, it's good enough for the state fair, but. But, but I hope we like it around here.
And you, uh, you've been involved with Farm Bureau a long time.
No, no, no.
Oh, what Larry has, okay, so maybe Larry, maybe. Larry's wife could speak to them, but, um, Vicky, but. The conservation, uh, and the Farm Bureau has been a big portion of that. That fair for as long as I can remember.
Well, there is no more conservation anymore. That's the nominee. Gun club, so the conservation clubs in Stark County are gonna be punked.
We showed in a tent.
So the fair board has. Maintained that building. To have the fish pond. Since then.
Well, I'm not, I'm not in favor of cutting anybody's funding. But I think with representation, Dave, I think we could do a lot, not, not for the Stark County fair government. But for Stark County, and that, that's what I mean.
And, and I did something too. Dave. Um, our, our intentions are not to take over the fair board.
So, so thi- this is what.
Right.
This could go on all night, but I'm gonna make a motion. That we, we, we request. Both boards, four H board. Um, and the four H council.
Fair board.
Fair board, sorry, fair, I get it, right, fair, the fair board and the four H council. To grant a seat, and I. I, I don't know if I can make the motion, I may have commissioners, so I'll let you make the motion if you decide that you're gonna do it. But that the council, Stark County council. Has a seat, and I'm just gonna say seat, because that means we can appoint if we don't do it, but my preference is that we. Um, on both of those boards. And we request you to.
Yes, this is fair, but we're not gonna be elected if we're gonna appoint somebody, we're just gonna be on the board. Your members aren't gonna elect one of us. I mean.
Then, but the second with the discussion is yes, like Todd said, we're not, is not. Not, you know, you guys selecting, we, we do this with all, at the beginning of every year. We appoint one of us beyond different boards, so that's, that's what we're, um, seeking, was, was there any further discussion?
Just a little bit, um. You brought some things to light when you were discussing the Legion about the bonds, and Mr. Journas. Cleared that up, you know, and thank you for that, and you, um, different, different things. What's that? Okay, maybe I'm not, but the way I understand him, I, Mark had a question, and Mark was misled, I don't wanna say misled, but, but, but. And now he does, and we were talking, and, and that's a typical reason, a- and, and again, just like Todd said. We don't wanna take over your fair board. None of us have time to take over your fair, we don't.
None of us have time to take over your fair. We don't wanna come in. We don't wanna come in and tell you what to do with that fair here because that's, we don't. But that's an example of what.
We want one seat.
We want, we want, we want a voice, right?
Just so we don't take any momentum from the commissioners and I, but I'd like to hear uh people in the audience. Yeah, we have a motion in a second.
I got one more comment. And I do agree with you, i- if, if we do appoint somebody to the board. When we do, if we do. And I agree with you, it needs to be an active, they should work just as hard on the board as you, as you folks do. I agree with that. It shouldn't be just somebody that shows up once a month at a meeting and votes you or not. It should be somebody that's out there putting in the amount of work that you people are putting in. I think that's only fair.
Well, I, I think you need representation.
I don't necessarily agree with that because we don't do that on every other board. If we fund, I, I think every other board's a little different than the fairboard too. I mean.
This will develop if they approve it. I think it'll develop. About it. So, but I, I, I'm with you. I, I know where you guys are at. We don't do it on other boards, but I mean, I think the person that. Elects to do this from our board is doing it because they have an interest in it and they wanna participate.
Other boards don't require the amount of physical labor that this board does.
Well, again, we will, we will get somebody to do it for us on our behalf then.
Right, we will contribute and then that defeats the purpose of having a councilman.
The physical labor part?
No, the finding somebody in the community to do it because now you're just a third party again. Nah, I disagree. I disagree with you on that, but. The council's not actually on.
Let's try it first. I know that we have a couple of people already decided to do this.
I can decide.
The motion is just to ask you to do that. So we've got a motion in a second. Let's. Let's see where that goes. Uh, all those in favor, aye, aye. And is there any opposed? One abstention.
And when you talk about the American Legion.
Yeah.
When all that happened, did they get took off the board?
They were never.
Never on them.
They were, they were never, they were, I believe that one time they were, they could vote and that, and as Bobby said, that has never been changed. I haven't seen that. Yeah, they never had a representative in the last thirty years at the meeting to, to vote.
Okay.
But doesn't everybody in the county have the ability to come to the meeting and vote? So.
There's a, do you have a copy of the bylaws? I can tell you who's on there, who's eligible. There's a lot, there's a ton of members there.
And, and my last question was, cause I, it's still a question in my mind what the mechanism is. That allows us to have a seat, your annual meeting and vote on your new members, but then that's the extent of our participation.
Um, as of now in the current bylaws, that's the extent of the voting. You're welcome. Because we're funded by you guys and, and the council, every meeting is open and you can come and maybe. See what goes on and see how it works before we jump to the, we want a member on there.
So you know, we've already voted to do that. So it's up to the commission. We, we are already asking you to do that.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I just.
The fair rather than take away, i- it's to the county's best benefit, put on a, a, a good show.
I guess I'm not seeing the downside. Like, I do not see the downside.
I mean, every other board that, any, any other board that any of us sit on, like I sit on the waste, solid waste, I vote, I'm voting member, I can make motions. Every board they sit on, they can make motions and vote anytime they want. So it shouldn't be limited to just one meeting if we're gonna be a member.
Well, that, I guess that, that was, that was the thing and hopefully we can dig up your bylaws to, to get into it.
Well, we've got copies.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, is it? Are we, you know, are we, I'm just speaking. With respect to the, our board, limited to just that one annual meeting?
As of now, yes.
Okay. And, yeah, I would appreciate, I mean, cause I don't know that we're ready to take an action like the council has.
Sure.
Um, but I'd like to see those to s- to see, you know, what that mechanism is, why, why it is we're limited to just that.
Yeah, it's just, it's just in the bylaw. I, I can't answer that. That's been bylaws for years way prior to me, so.
Yeah, and I, I was like prior to me as well. Time, time to look at it. I just wanna know why.
Yeah, that I can ask.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to review. Their organization. We need to do a deeper dive into the. How they're organized in our, our department. We actually play in their organization.
Does the commission mind if we go to the public then and then where is? I mean, like I said, we could, we could debate it all night. We're consolidated on our decision on mostly, I, I. But now we'd like to move forward.
I have a question. Can Stark County people become people that can vote on the fairboard?
I have to get you. I don't know if any of them know, but we've got the Lions Club officers. The commissioners. I believe council. So council, any council member, all council members. Um, pastor all. Though the, I don't know the term for that, but. Soil and water, chain with commerce.
How many actually paid in that vote?
Uh, they are all invited by letter. Um.
How many actually vote?
At one time I got by, which was two, two years ago, I think. There was probably, there was probably fifteen, eighteen people, I suppose.
Ten or eleven board members.
Maybe, maybe that.
So you're saying that the council and the commissioners already have that right to vote for the fair.
That's the only time I've ever been invited.
All of them could go.
It's only one vote from each. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know if it's all. They're invited every year. Everybody that's eligible to vote.
Basically them putting somebody on the board is the only change. They already have a vote there.
And annual meeting for membership.
That's only for membership is what those votes are for. Membership, not to vote on the actual fair board, except.
No, that is the actual.
For those members only.
They wanna be able to vote on our day to day decisions, our business making decisions on. What we're doing to create this and not, that, that's what I'm gathering.
That's what you need.
Feel like they're pretty, I mean, not debating that, but it's pretty neat blood now.
New old plan.
It's Rogers tomorrow.
Rogers off.
We've got some. Is there anybody else?
I got one more thing. Why, why in the commercial buildings were certain, certain booths charged more than other booths? You know what I'm talking about?
So the Republican and Democrat parties are on the edge. They take up thirty feet. Our booths are ten by ten booths.
One booth has more space than the other, but yeah.
We'll add a table next year, but. Um, they're ten by ten booths. So it's every ten by ten section is a set amount. We bumped it up last year. Because it had been moved in a long time and. That just. No, it didn't double this year. It was the same this year as it was last year. It was the same this year as it was last year. And it's, it's just every booth is ten by ten. Yeah, I know. That's, that's why we're here.
We'd still like to get businesses beating the door down that you, you know, like, you actually have to like have a lottery to get space in them.
But you know, they, they do have inflation.
Here's a list of letters that we send out to get people in there. We can't knock on all their doors. But we send letters. I've got a copy of the letter and this year we had.
How many four H members do we have?
This year was four, it was seventy-four.
So if, 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 if we're gonna touch on the commercial building. Um. Your, your position is that rates overall were not increased for booth space in that commercial building this year? That is, okay, that's, that is in great conflict with what has been told to all of us.
And, and I assume that's why we started, why we became here.
With the motivators is because we saw how much things have changed.
Tractor pull didn't help.
This is, yeah, this is an issue that's been brewing since at least twenty nineteen.
We had a meeting after fair and we knew this was a concern of community, you guys, everybody. We are looking into making some changes. We're gonna open it up to some vendors, possibly not just nonprofits. Um, talking to a lot of the nonprofits, the schools, um, everybody like. They see no benefit in being in there and, and manning that booth for six days. They don't see a benefit. So if we can. Utilize that space and have those vendors on the midway that everybody's used to seeing, have an indoor space so the rain doesn't affect them.
Usually healthcare organizations, um, you know, the several of those are there. I mean.
They're invited.
Don't guys get a reason for one of those?
Because uh, we did get one from the Oregon Davis school. He said, if they gained one kid. It would, they would be shocked and it was not worth standing there for the whole week for one kid.
But the commercial building's all about having the number of people come to the fair. That's what, that was.
And that's tied to the carnival, which we've been trying to get. But as you know, our, I, I guess, I don't know if you know, our, our, the budget we're working with. They require more upfront than we have in our entire accounts, all of them.
There's a lot of different reasons why we wanna get involved. We wanna be part of the, the whole community and like, not, not just the people that are here on the boards. The whole community making this better. I mean, most people don't even know that there's something, every kid that they can do in four H. It doesn't have to be animals. It could be ours. It could be something mechanical, water problems.
That's the other.
We need to embrace as a community, our four H fair. Like, I don't know why we're debating this. It's not what it should be. It could be better. And that's why we're here. This is why we asked you here. It's not because of hearsay. It's not because of the price of the binway. It's all of it. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be mean about this, but what the hell?
And in fairness, in fairness, you know, you've explained why you, why you haven't been able to get a carnival. Obviously it's financial, you know, whether, maybe we could, whether a voice on the board would come back and report to us, we could help them with that possibly.
Successful, you know what I'm saying? We're, we're not, this fair was not successful this year. I, I, I disagree. As far, as far as the amount of traffic, it could be more. Again, it could be better. That's, at least, it could be better. I don't know why we're like.
Baiting you guys having a member you bought, or you, you didn't even need us here to do that, but you guys just did. So.
Well, we also wanna share with you the feedback we're getting from the public.
The board, there is a lot of discontent from one end of the county to the other. If we don't stop the bleed, this fair will die.
There you go. You've got one on it.
There it is.
Does anybody else wanna speak on the council?
Volunteers happen to do five, six, seven weeks. You know what that tells me? You don't have enough inclusion. You don't have enough inclusion. You haven't asked enough people. Come and help. I can remember being uh on the livestock committee back in the seventies with Howard Hilton and, and Wayne Amy and those guys. They reached out to people and quite honestly, Bobby, what I hear is. It's, it's just you guys. You guys don't reach out to anybody.
Let's, let's go around the room though, cause like we're, we just wanna get, we don't wanna make an enemy out of your boards. We're saying we wanna partner with you. We wanna bring, you know, what the community's been asking for. So like somehow this is getting off the rails and going in negative. We're trying to be a constructive crisis.
I think there's a lot of guys where it may be even started tons, I think.
Well, like I said, I, you know, I, I don't wanna throw anybody on the bus, but I, I guarantee I have the deep phone calls. But every, every person I hung up with, was, let's do something. Let's partner together. Like, that's what we're talking about is the community raising this back up. That's it. We're not, we're not trying to beat anybody down. We wanna make this better. Let's, 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 Larry.
I got two things to say. One is, um, they're in the commercial building. Way back when I did like a feed business, I got a call. And I think that's what would help. If somebody, it doesn't have to be a fairboard member, find somebody in the community who would help. Call on people to ask, not just send a letter, but to see them face to face. And would you, would you like to put up a booth here at the fair? I think that was a long way.
I've done that since fair myself and have gotten three more people to come and commit to next year. We're willing, we're willing to make a change.
That's what I think.
No, no problem making a change in the.
Wanted to make one other comment. That is, you know, what does the parent actually do there for the kids? There's, I think, uh, Julia said four hundred and seventy-five kids involved with that. Those kids work on projects. They'll start on them. Well, they buy a cap. It's in the fall and they've got it all. All, all winter. Other kids will start in the, in the late winter on their projects. And they work with the family. The parents are working with them. It's a family project. There's a lot that goes into, those kids learn responsibility. When, 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 uh. We, we had pigs at home. Julia would get up at five o'clock and go out and do, I told her, I'll do the chores in the, in the evening. You gotta go in the morning. I thought, boy, I don't know how this is gonna go. She got up, by golly, and she did those chores. And kids all over the county do that. It's a wonderful thing for those kids that are involved in four H. Uh, it's been tough and, and you can't get a carnival, it seems, haven't been able to. But you know, those kids that come maybe two days a week to the carnival and miss out on the rides. That's two, two days a week they miss out on rides. We're about the four hundred and seventy-five. That all year have worked on projects, worked with their family and, you know, they get awards and they feel great at the end of the year. We'll be done. They have a lot of fun with each other there. The other thing is, is like during the fair, especially auction night, it's a community event. All the rest of us go and we're part of the fair and we see our friends. And that's what's great. It gives us a sense of community, us adults. It gives the kids that, that learning experience. The fair is really good, like it is, even though it's not what we want, we can make it better. Let's not say we don't have something that really does a good job for the community.
You had your hand up earlier, which that guy, I believe that you wanna say anything?
Yeah, question. So my son, he, he wasn't four H. He no longer is. Uh, so I have participated in it before, but. What are the other? Uses for the fairground besides fairway? Well, okay, yeah, Yellowstone.
Yellowstone, they do a haunted, a haunted hallways. They do uh open goat shows. They do open rabbit shows. We use the buildings for storage in the winter.
Okay, but what else are we doing there though to generate revenue though? They all, yes. Is there, is there ways that we could maybe possibly start? Running the facility out for other events?
It's always, it's always, always been. Always.
Another reason why firstly, I'm interested in upgrading some things to attract more people from that.
Yeah, that's what I'm too like.
Yes, but I, I feel like that's where you were going, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, how like quarter count, which I'm sure we wouldn't be able to do something like that in that scale, but like ship's your one on the road type of. Like, didn't they have the ships on on the road there once?
They've gone different.
Is there, is there anybody else that wants to speak to any of that, any of the fair things now?
Have you visited other county fairs?
Yes.
Well, Port County's two commercial buildings.
Yes.
Was down to one mission and they had part of it in the other building where they used to hold four H and open class. But four H is now offed into one building and open class was only the size of what it used to be. So we're not the only ones with the commercial building.
Again, again, you're taking this as criticism. We wanna join with and try to build this. You know what? I've heard it here about other times. This is Stark County. I wanna make.
We all wanna work together to make it better.
Look at how many other things Stark County has.
I, I do wanna follow up on what she was saying that, um. My discussions with Nan at Oaks, I mean, her entire business, the, the majority of it is doing booths for trade shows and things like fairs. She was telling me that during COVID, when everything halted. Of, of businesses and corporations discovered other ways to do. Of, uh, businesses and corporations discovered other ways to do business without going to these shows and expending the time and money. And so that could be a reason why maybe across the board, fairs are seeing a decrease in, uh, commercial building participation. She said that it had, uh, as far as recently as late last year, it had not bounced back from pre-open levels. And of course, it was directly affecting her business because she provides the supplies for.
Maybe we need to think about, uh. Not so much the four H program, is maybe we need to come up with another. Uh, uh, festival that would coincide with, you know, because it talks about like, the carnivals and stuff, personally, I never let the kids.
Right, that's not what four H is. Okay. That one does see.
One thing I just picked up on, uh, on that kind of. How much of this, uh, cause we've got two separate things, the fair board and the four H board. I don't think we have much of a problem as far as the health of, of four H. At, when compared to the health of the rest of the fair. And I think that's the cause of so much consternation.
It's a lovely, I guess, as a fair board member, I've been there a while. My focus is that four H program and to make sure that that's correct.
But if there's, if there's separate organizations and you're not. A four H counselor. Why is that your focus?
Because I grew up in it and we provide all the buildings and the facilities to make sure that that runs well.
So you see the conclusion the public is coming to, that the rest of the fair is being ignored. Or four H.
The rest of the carnival, not the rest of the fair.
I mean, everything on the west side of Division Street, um. Cause there was more than just the carnival.
Uh, everything on the west side of Division Street runs perfectly and is very successful. The east side is where the carnival used to be.
I'm sorry, I got my directions.
Yeah, but the east side is where the carnival is.
This is left, right?
Oh, s- sorry, yeah, as, as a fair board and all of us, I, I think I can think for all of us. The reason we got on the fair board was to make sure the four H program continued and. We had a, a space for them to use.
That's, see, that's, that's, that's my stumbling block, cause that's the.
So why don't, why don't, why don't the council, why don't the council start up a. Fairs and festivals committee and do your own thing there at the fairgrounds.
You know, that was actually.
Like anybody, or you guys donate to it, so you probably have it free.
He had gone, well, he had gone to the fair and contacted me that he was really disappointed in pretty much everything. And we discussed maybe making a, something like a fairs and festivals committee where somebody from each festival. Uh, participates in meetings to, at least maybe once a year, something to exchange ideas, do we, because, you know, I'm thinking of Joanne Bailey out in San Pierre, the one woman task force. And, uh, she's got a ton of vendors coming to, our festival is only in the third year. We already have that. But I, I mean, I'm really just looking at pooling ideas from all the different festivals to try to.
One, one right now, real quick, just, um, years, several years ago, I was approached by Montreal County Four H Fair Board. Um, I had these big heavy mud trucks and I was involved in that. And they asked me to do a show for them and they paid us the first two, like, three thousand dollars, um, and then what happened was, is then, we ended up starting doing it for free for them. And then I actually paid them to do three other shows a year there, so I was bringing the fairgrounds, they weren't out there, I mean, we took care of the bed and all that they had there. I mean, so there are ways, you know, and I just did it till, we just got so busy at work, you got burned out, cause I mean, we kept all the money, we also did all the work, we was doing it all over.
And that's where all, we're all full-time workers, but we can't, we can't dedicate two weekends a month to make sure. There's a, something going on there.
No, no, I just mean, there's, there are ways to make money, you sound like.
You say it yourself, when you get busy at work, you can't.
Yeah, I just have a question, does the fact that we moved the fair up so early into the season, does that have, has that, there been a correlation with?
I've heard all positive about that.
If you did that, you tried to get a car, originally, you did that, you tried to get a car.
No, no, go ahead. I just was saying, like, with the four H kids, we're helping them with their project, I think, you gotta hurry up or get it not. Four H season starts October first, there are clubs that start meeting in October and November, and they meet. All the way through June, so they have the opportunity to start on their projects at that time.
I know that.
Well, your vegetables and your hay.
Like you mentioned, the cat, you get cattle early, but you don't get people during the later, I mean, depend on that, but they can't start working on things.
So, so it's been a positive, it's been positive since they moved it.
Uh, as a fair board, yes, like.
I mean, I'm saying, it's somebody that brought animals and it's nice, that's not as odd, right, yeah, I did too.
All the different species and I. Fair board or parent, I like it, I like it better because I went to LaPorte. And wandered around that fair, I'm able to go to.
I love our fair.
I like getting away from the others.
I love it.
The main reason was the vendors. The food trucks, the carnival, trying to get one back and it just still didn't pan out, even moving it.
What is a carnival cost?
Well, there's.
You have to have a guarantee, I think.
Well, there, the one we had was the best scenario, he showed up. He took care of all the wristbands, we didn't touch it, we didn't have to put any time or effort into it, and he cut us a check for five or six thousand every year. So, once he left. Everybody else is the opposite, like, uh, the one that was at LaPorte, I talked to him. When, when I retired, just, you know, a, a miniature version of LaPorte bring seventy-nine rides.
Twenty thousand.
Or his forty, or just beginning to show up and you have to hope you make that money back. But when he, this also kinda touches the community, if we go to one of those carnivals. They want complete control of the food vendors, none of our local vendors are able to come. So, you're gonna be able to get, uh, Italian sausage and an elopineer from some guy from Ohio.
The other guy that said.
So, if, if we go with a big carnival, there's. You're gonna have more bad.
But, no, I think we've hashed this around enough, you know, when we. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to avoid.
I'm gonna be super quick, so I, I'm gonna defend. The fair. Team a little bit, because to Cassie's point, we run a nonprofit, we used to go to pet shows every weekend. They have all died, they're just gone since COVID, they're not recovering, now that being said, that doesn't mean that there's not an opportunity to look at. Different things than maybe what the fair was before, there's other opportunities, we were just at the power from the pass through. Many people there. Right, now, again, I wasn't super impressed with most of the vendors, I mean, there was a handful, there could have been more. But I just think that there is an opportunity to get more. Input from the community. I know, I'm just saying. Exactly, but I think the point is to, to, you know, to the council's point is, maybe it isn't necessarily a voting member, maybe it's just having that representation to bounce. I mean, to me, I think our opportunities, the carnival, I'm with you, if you can't use your local vendors, then. They want them to kinda control, that's.
That's, that's the stuff that people don't realize.
We didn't come to make just the carnival, we just wanna make the, we, we, we got a lot of things out for the one part, we just wanna smaller selves, um, you know. Is that, yeah, all right, and then we're stopping, I asked you earlier, go ahead.
Well, uh, I'm here kind of on behalf of Lions, so I heard Mr. Vinkley say that all the, well. The history on that is Lions Club was instrumental in getting the fairgrounds donated. Becoming the fair. The Hamilton Lion. The Hamilton Lion Club traditionally always was allowed, uh, every Hamilton Lion member was allowed to vote. Like the annual election. And then three or four years ago, we were informed that the fair board changed that policy. And did not inform us, and they told us at last, the last annual meeting, that we were only allowed four votes. Um, Mr. Vinkley is saying that all officers get to vote at probably sixth grade, I don't remember what the total number is.
Yeah, but they're, they're listed officer, president, vice president, secretary, those are.
Point on all that is, that Hamilton Lion Club has been very involved with the fair, and very involved with the community there, and we wish to continue to do so. And quite frankly, we, we feel like we're being shut out a little bit. And to the point where we had a fair board member ask us, why do you even care? And, and that's concerned us, because we do a lot with the community, and that's our one time a year that we can base upon. And so we need to have some input. As to what's going on in the fair ground, ring fair, and with our building. Uh, and. Quite frankly, that, that's one of the things we'd like to see addressed, uh, is have the. Uh. Membership be a little more open a- and not so close, cause it does seem like. The, uh, membership, uh, and voting for the membership is, uh, is pretty tight, it's pretty close. Every, every fair board member gets to vote, and then they pick and choose who's the help from the community. So, pretty easy to see that whoever the fair board wants to be elected, that they've got a pretty good advantage. And particularly when a historic organization like Lions is suddenly restricted to the number of votes that they have.
Well, the, the reason, I can speak on that restriction, because prior to that. The Lions Club members have all been heavily, and I'm not taking, I know you've been involved in four H and Larry has as well. A lot of them have been involved, but their membership went from like. A handful of people. To. Twenty-five or thirty, because they realized and they all had a vote, so they. It was try, a, a little bit, in my eyes, a little bit of a manipulation to try to get. Their pool in there, so they were just recruiting.
Yeah, we didn't plan to ask for representation for. And I, I'm not gonna get in debate, enough with debate, uh, whether it's right or wrong, but that's the position of the Hamilton Lion. We continue to be a part of the community, we continue to do a lot of charitable work there, and. We continue to have an interest in, in the fair, and it's just disturbing when a fair board member would ask us, why don't we even care? I think that's, that was a direct quote, right, wrong, or otherwise, app, so that's a concern to us. Uh, as a lion, because like I said, that is the one, the one thing that we have every year, and, and we do a lot, we ran scholarship, we give the fair board a thousand dollars a year, so. Uh, you know, yeah, we, we have historic. In the fair board.
Okay, we had.
A thousand or a hundred checks, and then, well, once again, there we see some of the.
Last year, Larry did.
Thousand covered their electric bill.
Yeah, and last year Larry joined us to donate. For the sponsor of the day and the Lions Club.
Again, it sounds like we've been all doing together, it sounds like the Lions are interested in being involved and, and moving things forward too.
We'd like to make like. Like the last guys. Yeah, just letting everybody.
Right now, all of our, the council is.
Just open it up, let anybody come in and decide.
But Don or Bobby, a lot of people think that it just, just.
Just like.
You said, a lot of people think it's too tight, that you guys are too tight, you're not open to other people. And, and, and I'm just telling you, that's, that's been going around for many of them.
Yeah, I mean, why wouldn't you have like fifty volunteers to come help with?
Volunteers are always, well, we don't, why, why wouldn't you actually seat them, then you could make them, they would not be a voting member. The council member. Some of us. Why isn't there forty-seven? You guys can have people helping you as well.
Listen, I'm not a high earner. No, I'm just saying, we're asking for that, we wanna try to help. In, in multiple ways, so, you know, if, if we can, was there anything else from, from the three of you that you wanted to tell us? We, we're gonna ask you to come to our next meeting, so we can revisit this and see how things are going, you have a meeting between, uh, now and then. Uh, it's the third Monday, it'd be, uh, August. Man, would you mind, uh, letting Rachel know when your meeting is?
Ours?
Yes, okay, that way we can at least get at least one councilperson. We're committed to that, we're committed to this, so like, in your meetings, whatever else, we're, we're gonna get more involved, you know, we, we, we're trying to listen to what we're hearing from the public. Again, this isn't here to tear anybody down, this is all joined together, maybe this fair. Thank you. Um. Larry? Maybe, uh, this is stemming from our discussion about we were going to raise up to be part-time workers. Starting January first, but I believe you wanna try to figure out the way to do it now, or.
Right. Uh, so. As you all know, uh, my BCA secretary, she left. Uh, the job hosting has been up for a few weeks now. I still today have not received even one application for it.
Or one indeed, I have a lot of.
I believe it, it is posted like on Facebook and that, I'm not changing that, uh, I have had some feedback on Facebook for a few people. Due to the rate of pay of what eight percent is paid part-time here. They only start out at eleven something an hour for the first ninety days. And then after ninety days, when they get bumped up to thirteen dollars and maybe one flat. So I believe that had a lot to do with it.
You didn't have enough in your budget to promise support that, it's like, you know, you know, there's a. Uh, I'm assuming you're, I just don't have some, because someone's not in that position.
Yeah, I, for the rest of the year, yeah, it should be fine. Um.
We haven't made a change in the salary limits for this year, so I mean, how does that?
You'd have to do amendments.
Amendments for everybody.
Right. I think it would be helpful.
In principle.
Board for everyone, county, county, their part-time help, to get bumped up to around fifteen dollars an hour.
This is a, this is a nice benefit having you guys here tonight, like, really, I, I like joint session, sorry, it's just, I wanna bounce ideas off it. And, and I'll speak for me, I'm not speaking for all council, I'm speaking for myself, and first of all, I don't have a problem with. It, it happening now for the other departments, as long as we don't do any additional appropriations, as long as nobody gets a budget trouble, I get it. You know, we're struggling, we're struggling to hire people, we're struggling to sustain what we have. The only problem is, it's also unfair to departments that may not have that money available, but then that person is deserving, so. Then you create this thing where there's some attrition, possibly, because. You know, hey, you know, my boss just can't afford to pay me, but I'm deserving one too, so. I don't know how we close that gap.
Is there something that prevents us from offering hours in VZA to. One of the other part-timers we have already in the county working for another office?
No, just long, they don't work over a hundred and thirty a month.
So.
I need, I need a person though in that office, though, they have to be there. Specific days of the week, they have to have a set schedule. Where they are there.
What's that schedule?
It's up to them, whatever days they wanna set. I do however, uh.
Is there a minimum number of hours that needs, that, that office needs to be staffed?
At, at least three days a week.
So that's twenty-one, four hours?
Twenty-one.
Could that office do like eight to noon or noon to four? Three days a week?
No, it would be eight to four. Yeah, uh, however, I, I am in a kind of a pickle as the commissioners kinda. Got to see today. Because a, uh, person from the public came to them. I have people that are applying for variances. And I am unable to take their applications, I can take their application. But I'm not taking their money from them, because I have no one to fill that position right now, to do that extra work in the office. So. I'm not taking their money until I have. A secretary for the job. To do the work, um. Currently, I have two applications that I already have in office. People that are seeking variances, I have a third one on the way. Because the planning commission at their meeting last week referred someone to, to the board's army appeals. To seek a variance, and. Right now, I'm stuck in limbo because. We can't schedule any variance hearings because I have no one to prepare them.
Rachel, years ago, we, I thought. I'm going back, I thought we had an extra employee that just floated.
Floater, we used to have floaters in, in the day.
We don't do that anymore.
Each office kinda pairs their own, so Lori has her own part-time person, the assessor has her own part-time person, or that has their own part-time people, but any of those part-time people could work in any office. As long as they don't go over the hours.
And that's a hundred and thirty hours?
A month.
A month. The problem with that is I need somebody there that's moving there right early, this isn't something that I can just tell them, you know. I can't tell one person one day to do it and then somebody else the next day how to pick up from there.
I think what you're saying is you need somebody, you need somebody trained for that position, if you cross screen ten or fifteen people.
So that that shouldn't be that hard to figure that out.
So we're talk, we're we're talking about one or ten position between the BCA and the planning commission. How many open unfilled slots do we have?
I I just have the one right now.
Between both the plan commission and?
Well, the planning commission has a part-time position, but generally, um, in the past. The BCA secretary has filled in as a part-time employee. My solution to this would be. My code enforcement officer is willing to become a full-time employee. And she would be willing to take on the role of code enforcement and the BCA secretary, that would be my solution to it.
One part-time person wouldn't take care of the BCA and the planning commission uh, because it's too many hours. That one part-time person couldn't work both slots.
They could only work, what is it, thirty-five hours a week?
Thirty-two or.
Well, yeah, a hundred and thirty a month. Yeah, which in the past, the, when I was the BCA secretary, I worked as the BCA secretary of my. Monday, Wednesday and Friday, and then I would work part-time for PM occasionally, like when she took a vacation or something.
Depends on how scheduled, I mean, they could, they could.
We're basically in the same office.
Think without putting the commissioners on the spot right now, I think that the guidance should come. You know, uh, you know, we get the commissioners thoughts and that, like I said, the intention was not to have them here tonight, put them on the spot for things like this. But I think there's two considerations here, one of the things is we try to promote internal employees. The offer their part-time people because they they might want more hours, like, I can't remember who asked that, maybe that was Don or who. But the other thing is, um, if we do decide we wanna start going with that higher hourly rate now. Um, again, I I'd rather, I'd rather put you in the spot that you think about it, but I think we need to consider that for all offices because. There's, there's a few office owners here right now that will murder me on my compare on my car. If we make this from one office, and that's no offense to you, Mary, it's.
And get hired at McDonald's.
So, so next year, there's big race. I'll ask this because we're on the other side of the budget hearing. Well, what did we, what what was, I wasn't here.
We decided we would raise it for January first.
So, okay, so.
January first.
January first is gonna go from thirteen eighty-one an hour to fifteen.
The scale, again, we know a lot of people will just raise it, but I mean, it's up to the supervisor to put it in my range.
Right, so you're saying do it for Mary's office and no, nobody else?
So what moves me because. Offer their part-time, yes, I will get you.
We got enough part-time, I mean, my personal can, we got enough part-time help in the county that will help her out for now.
I think, I'm sorry, do they have enough?
So you just asked about your part-time people, are there, is there enough? Room in their, in how they're scheduled to keep them under that hundred and thirty some odd hours a month? And allow them to work.
One works for me three days a week, one works for me two days a week. So a three-day-a-week person would be able to work possibly one day a week, that one week, or two-day-a-week person could possibly work two days. When I had a full-time part-time person, they only had to take a day and a half off a month, depending on the month.
Very, so then she has one, hers could fill all that in and would be covered.
Okay. So then I, so then what you're suggesting is then I.
Talking temporarily, I I mean, we'd like to see somebody, let's let's see if we can get somebody attractive, we're going up to fifteen for sure.
Mary, talking about Bobby, the 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 code enforcement officer. They, the the co, the the person she's talking about, the code enforcement officer, I I wanna go to back for Mary for a minute because. It it's not just a clerical job, she's out on the road, she's 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 leaving tags on doors, warning people to clean up their messes. She she's up and down the road, i- it's, it's, tell me if I'm wrong, i- it's not setting in there collecting, it's not just all collecting fees. It's out basically enforcing Stark County codes, ordinances. Remember when we talked in the budget hearing, bringing the BCA, because they wanted us a full-time position and we denied that. And I understand, but we talked about to the BCA to help. Her and you, we would bring that up to what we had fifteen more hours. We added a certain amount of hours to it and 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 to bring it up to the fifteen dollars an hour. So January first, okay, so but that's a little different than just clerical part-time help, that's that's out on the road.
Working for this now. This 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 gal that she's got.
Uh, for part-time help, plus whatever is left over in the BCA secretary's uh, salary budget. The problem is, I'm not getting anybody.
See, the thing is, we can't change the salary ordinance just for one person. I get it, I'm just explaining it, and there's a lot of people in the public too, that probably wanna understand better what we're talking about, so the the consideration would be. Again, some may have enough in their budget to do it, some may not, you know, I I think on this one, though, we would still have the recommendation from the commissioners. Whether we would we follow with this or not, so what I'm asking is, it would be another couple of weeks for you to have another meeting, but. Maybe we should give you some time to think about it and, you know, that get a little bit motion table, not get rid of it. And just throwing that out there, and then you can let us know what your recommendation is and speaking with the auditor as well.
So, so the code, the code enforcement off officer now, all they do is look at and start kind of going, so they don't investigate. Let's say building permits that somebody said a person didn't have, and they didn't go out there and check on it ever? Is that the code enforcement's office?
No, that is the building inspector's office, job, however, the property that you personally are talking about specifically, if I'm correct. He did go out and take a look at that.
But he didn't go out there when they had the roof tore off, they rewired the whole thing, they replanted new blood, new studs inside the walls. New windows, new siding, they totally rebuilt that house.
Okay, so why wasn't he called the one that?
I I did, I came in the office.
He went out, he went out.
Uh, okay, we're not talking about that, I'm just trying to figure out the.
I mean, obviously, that's a sore spot there for you, but he did go out there and check.
It is a sore spot, should be a sore spot for any taxpayer in the whole county.
But he did go out there and check that, and to him, he didn't see anything that was needing to be permitted, he did see that they put on new roof. A new roof does not require.
So the thing that bothers me from what I'm hearing is, is you don't have anyone that collects the fees. So that their projects.
I can collect the fees, I have no problem collecting the fees, I have no one to work.
Well, here's the thing, wh- whether we like it or not, when we're employed, we're we're servants. And if if they're not getting the service, then we need to act on that, and that's, that's what we're for.
I have no one to provide that service.
You're this Bobby, that's, that's the code enforcement lady, Robbie, so she can't work a few more days a week and and.
She would like to have a full-time job. Warn me that she may be looking for another job now, so that she can be a full-time employee somewhere and have benefits.
How many, how many for that patients, how many code enforcement does she do a week or a month?
I, at every planning commission meeting, I provide an inspection report. Of how many activities were done in code enforcement, code enforcement officer takes care of things like. Um, animals, junk, you know, that kind of.
I mean, is it ten or is it a hundred or?
Um, last meeting, I think we had eighty something.
Oh, it's a lot.
She's busy.
Yeah.
Well, I I don't think we're disputing the the deservingness of it or whatever else, I think the commissioners are just, like I said. I'll personally push for something tonight if you guys, but I I don't wanna put you under that pressure. I don't want you to be afraid to accept what we asked for the joint meeting because we wanted to talk about the fair board and the four-H council. Not necessarily, you know, making, putting you under the spotlight with all of our employees tonight. I think you're saying that would suit you better if we table for now and let you consider. Would somebody on the uh, council like to make a motion to that?
But we don't have anybody that's waiting to get projects done at this time.
There's a few, no, at least.
Commissioner's meeting this morning, they have a woman come in and I cannot get her scheduled for a meeting. She wants to build a pole barn out at Boa Shores. And because there's no dwelling on that property currently, she has to seek a variance, I can't schedule her for a meeting.
We weren't trying to share these for that, we didn't trust those, you're saying she's gonna get a building permit? We were considering that anymore, as they never. What would the commissioner like? You still have a preference? Wanna make some kind of decision tonight?
But we wanna, we're okay with you guys tabling it, we'll address that in our next meeting.
Sorry, like, you know, I I don't try to stay in our lane and let, you know. Um, with somebody like, I'll make a move and table this and this, I'm looking at the part-time stuff, what do they need to do? Come up with something in this meeting, this way it stays on. Is there a second? Second from Cassie? All those in favor, I?
I.
I'm gonna vote nay because I don't wanna see anybody in Stark County happen to wait to get a bill.
That's what kinda. They were talking about a code, code office enforcement, now all of a sudden we're talking about.
That was my.
That's the thing is, we have a code enforcement officer, so yeah, let's.
And the the issue isn't that nobody can get a permit, the issue is no one can. Because there's three of those pending, so there's no secretary for that. That's the issue. Guess that's where somebody needed to step in and do it.
Um, real. We had it on, we put on here about the attorney fees of uh, other expenses for solar under solar ordinance. I'll I'll just throw a shed a little, a light on this real quick first, on our first two agreements. I'll say that it was me personally, because the other council wasn't here, but I had recommended, I just felt like. Why would we need to pass money to the county as income if we were, um, uh, when it comes to engineering? Um, and it comes for the two attorney's fees, because I thought, back then, why don't we have the solar companies pay it, it's it's services that are going to them. And so we were doing it then, moving forward, we're talking about, um, changing, um, and creating a fund. Um, for receiving those um, fees and then the county paying those out, so essentially, we're doing what we were doing before. Um, but creating a fund now instead of uh, just having the solar companies pay directly. And that is this ordinance here, um, I do wanna hear what the rest of the council has to say, should I read the ordinance in its entirety?
Uh, that's a, you can just read it by title, be lucky. So I also passed around. Into, cause I know that there's a couple of people that have questions on this, it's a couple elastic randomly structured because. So here's, here here's kind of, here's kind of the, I sent it to the email and the ordinances to Charlie and sent it to David, kind of to somebody else. Capital improvement projects, including solar specifically, not listed under my retainer, and for good reason, it's like bonding and bobby sticks and things. So our thinking was, why does the taxpayer, why should they shoulder the solar burden that really should be shoulder by the solar company, so how we did in the past? And it hasn't now, there's, there's just one page of key agreement that I, that I, it sets forth. Um, a paragraph will talk about how those expenses will pay, and we were careful to put that in there because we wanted to state that like next to her, for example, we're looking at. Is they would pay directly to the engineer and to the attorney. Um, the fees that the county had, that paragraph specifically states, the purpose of convenience, the client is the county, it doesn't create any, that's any relationship with anybody else. So who's your approach, since then, we don't, I don't know if my mind has changed, we don't wanna do that, we wanna pay it in front, but we need a fund and we could do that. So that's the only thing this ordinance does, it creates a fund, I am not pro or anti-solar, I'm merely, if the counties moving forward with this, which. We are pursuant to council commissioner vote, I don't want the taxpayer to be charged. Uh, cause it's gotta be, it's again, it's excluded from my retainer agreement, paying the engineer money, and it's not a cheap sum because it's a lot of work, our approach is only. You know, the taxpayer haven't paid that, the solar companies are asking for abatements, for permits, for hearings, for tech committee meetings. That's the only, cause I know there were questions and there were questions how we've done in the past, and again, pay there, that, it's just a single feature page, so. Paper, so you can pass that down, they could see how we did this with Nextera and the same things in maintenance project, um. It's a sensitive topic, again, I'm not here to advocate for one way or one thing, I'm just saying, if it's gonna go in this direction, this is the preference of. What I'm hearing is solar companies, is they'd rather have a fund, the county pays and then refunds the county for those fees. It was a sensitive topic, I just, anyway, one to be clear, we were trying to hide the ball on anything. This agreement that you're looking at came in front of the county council and the commissioners multiple times, public hearings in the past, I just wanted to. How things talked about and it's easy to inflate and confuse the agreements, so I'm gonna reprint that. How it was listed, how it's been done in the past, which is a little bit different than how I guess. At least one solar company wants to do in the future, they'd rather just pay the fees to a fund, but we need a fund in order.
But we could also deny them of that.
Sure, sure.
Will it be quick?
We, I had discussed with the uh, management that uh, that this is waves done in the past and in our management felt like. That puts us in some risk and puts the county at some risk, there's been some opposition, it's come up, and we don't wanna be in a position. That he says, hey, that looks in a focal where.
You mean the anti-solar opposition?
Yeah, where where the solar company actually pays Bob Lloyd or just a shram attorney. Sure, we would rather see the county make that payment, we don't mind giving the money to the county to do that. We don't mind.
Why you wanna do it too, that's why presenting it as such is that we're just doing it to, you know, a piece that, you know, or or just, you know.
Yeah, I apologize if there's any confusion, we wanna be transparent with that, that's why, I mean, it's probably the worst time to bring up this topic since it's such a divisive topic right now, but I don't want anybody to think. They don't think we're just being done in an underhanded manner, and the only thing is, if the county's moving forward with it, which we are. I don't want the taxpayer to have to shoulder the burden of the engineer, of the accounting, of the legal fees.
Absolutely not.
I would agree, but um, I, I think it's six of one half dozen of the other. Uh, when it comes to solar companies directly paying you versus us setting up a fund, it's still them paying the expense. They have ordinances written that are governing their behavior and it smells rotten.
Or post sex records and then a divorce casting, why don't we just have one attorney handle both sides of the divorce or a prosecution, see exact same thing? I need to look out for your best, and I don't want the solar company writing these ordinance for you, me not looking them over, us not having hearings, just say. Well, we don't wanna pay up to those counties' legal fees to to look at it, of course, and that's the way I do, you guys need protection on your side, there's things we have to go through. Tech committee meetings, planning commission meetings, county council meetings, I've got to develop maps, I've got to, you know, give evidence to you. Someone needs to check this thing for you, and it's specifically excluded from my retainer agreement. Someone's gotta pay it, I don't care if the county pays it or the solar company pays, I'm just trying to look out for all these people, so it's not their tax money that does it, I I get your point. I get your point, this is how every single other county.
And correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, a- and to maybe try to help Cassie a little bit. It's really not solar companies ordinance, it's Stark County's ordinance, it has to go ordinance, it has to go through the planning commission first. Then to the commissioners for approval, right?
And they absolutely, the solar companies will offer durass to begin with based on what they've done in other counties, but it has to be tailored to Stark County.
Right, bottom line is, the commissioners have to approve it. So it's, it's really our ordinance, not the, once they approve it, it goes through the planning commission and they approve it, it's really not the solar companies. Ordinance, it's our. Once they approve it, it goes through the planning commission and they approve it, it's really not the solar company's ordinance, it's our.
And you guys will approve the abatements, you want to approve them and everything else, that would be your.
Yeah, right, right.
And I want to clarify your comment just about. One attorney representing someone in a divorce, I was not clear what you were.
Well, I didn't know if your suggestion was that if the solar companies have an attorney, the county also doesn't need somebody reviewing that ordinance on behalf of the county. If it wasn't there, let them write these ordinance, if I'm I'm saying.
No, I just just said it all, but I think they should be. They should be paying their own councils and then provides a proposed ordinance agreement or review. And if that's not in your employment agreement, maybe we need to discuss putting it in there.
You're one of three right now in my agreement, and certainly when that comes up, please, please do, I'm open to that.
Commissioners, are you are you comfortable with the way we're doing things now, with the council has gone through with first two E D As, and then also the way that we've. Proceeded with council and paying the council. In this case, in this case, I mean, council is an attorney.
I I. Yeah, I'm not quite sure why this. I I kind of understand the logic behind why we want to do it this way, but I don't. Quite understand. It was, this is just a request from Hoosier Solar to do it this way, it's just for their comfort.
The way I understood it, and and Larry, I put words in your mouth, when Larry and I talked a couple of weeks ago, though, I think it was, he said they would rather have a fund set up. And they don't want to structure the way it was like with NextTerror, with that section in the economic development agreement, which would come up at a public meeting anyways, it has to be approved.
Right. Which I'm not sure, I thought that was going to satisfy your concern, Cassie, because I figured then it was pulling through the county. I didn't realize that I I wasn't understanding.
I think the perception of the public isn't really going to change, they're just going to see the sellers providing money to the county attorney. To produce a final product that in the eyes of the county is overly generous and favorable to the solar companies. And especially when they're driving around on gravel roads right now.
I had honey come from coming in.
But in reality, this is a step. To ensure that. The county doesn't get stuck with the bill or the extra work that he's going to have to do. For the solar companies, this is a mechanism to ensure the solar company still winds up with the bill. For his work that he's doing on our behalf.
I understand that, but I still, I think that it um has an appearance of impropriety to it and not not on Justin's behalf. Or not not against you, Justin, you know, because you're just, you know, we hired you and you're doing what we asked you to do. And doing things within your employment agreement, but there is an appearance of impropriety, I mean, people do pay other parties attorney's fees. Regularly, when there is a litigation and a court order, not in advance.
I disagree with that.
How 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 are how are the other county panel, are they handled like this?
Last guy?
I I I took this from the way White White County.
White County is the one that everybody always brings up, White County.
I mean, I I don't care how it's done originally, and I'm not the decision maker, you you then are, you know, but if you say we're moving forward with this. I want to make sure that it's done in a responsive fiscal manner, it's the only thing, if you tomorrow said we're against solar, that's what I'm against solar, who I represent, it's two towns that are very anti-solar. When I'm sitting in those meetings, I'm anti-solar because I represent a board that doesn't like it, I'm just trying to put you guys in the best position and in the taxpayer in the best best position we have. If we're going to be forward with this project. And and I certainly understand your point, Cassie, it's going to be viewed. I don't know if there's a majority minority of people, it's all the solar companies getting what they want, um you know.
I see no, I see no sense of improprieties or anything, I haven't heard one thing from anyone about it, I mean. Really, I mean, what difference does it make, still get paid the same amount.
We thought disclosure was the name of the game, not just.
I present the ordinance then to see if somebody wants to make a motion on it, um whereas the county council for Stark County is responsible for performance of very. Performance of various fiscal responsibilities for Stark County. County owners expect and receive applications for permits as well as requests for abatement. The county wishes to establish a fund for receipt of monies from any commercial solar company applying for permits, abatements, and other county level expenses. The county undertakes the establishment of this fund to alleviate any burden to the county taxpayer. So that any and all fees related to any commercial solar permit, abatement, or other incentive is not payable from county tax monies. Now therefore be resolved by the county council of Indiana, establishing a fund with receipt of solar expenses for funds for Stark County Indiana is hereby. Adopted as follows, Stark County Solar Expense Fund, being now resolved, the Stark County Auditor is hereby authorized to create a new fund for the receipt of aforementioned or aforementioned funds. Such fund shall be called the Stark County Solar Expense Fund, number forty-one twenty, the fund. It's non-reverting, the fund shall be a perpetual fund and expenditures can be made from the fund only for those purposes as enumerated in this ordinance. Authorized use of funds, monies received by the fund, enumerated in this ordinance may be used for the following, engineering, accounting, and legal expenses, we did any work. Performed for the county by any engineer, accountant, or attorney related to commercial solar installations and other solar related matter. This shall include all engineering, accounting, and legal expenses for any permit, abatement, or other county level incentive sought by any commercial solar company. Effective this day, uh until this ordinance is due to be reviewed.
So. How is the money? Okay, obviously, it's going to come from the solar company, so. Is there imaginary amount of money to be put in there, Justin submits a bill, and then we pay him out of that imaginary fund? Or is he submitting a bill to them, and they give us the money, and we put it in the fund, and then we give it to him? Is that, I assume that's how it would work?
And Bob Lloyd too, I don't want to think it's just.
For our future, for our future engineers and attorneys.
I'm just, I'm just looking at going around a certain sphere.
You you know, Tom, as far as I'm concerned. Kind of like Sandra said at the end.
Yeah, it doesn't make any difference.
Same, but I I I came to you because. It was discomfort on the part of the management at Hoosier Solar, they didn't want there to be. They felt uncomfortable making the payment directly to Justin and to Bob, they'd rather give the money to the county and let the county make that payment. It 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 all runs from the same place and into the same place.
It's all rotten, that's why there's no good.
It's all rotten.
Them paying to get their, to get things done, but they want them done.
It's them paying for the work that we want. For to be in compliance with our demands.
That we would have to pay for, if they're not ready, they're also.
Okay, I'm at, and I'm I'm not for or against you, Cassie, I'm just helping you understand your point of view. What do you think should be done to take the rottenness away?
Well, I feel like, you know, when I look at every transaction I've been involved with. In my twenty-year career here, um I've had, you know. I've had the opposing, theoretically, the opposing party. You always have to look down the road, like what happens when everybody's not on the same page. One, I would say one thing I am apprehensive about is. At some point, there's a disagreement and the ordinance is brought into play. Well, in contract law, whoever drafts the contract, any ambiguities will be construed against the drafter. So we're drafting ordinances, there are ambiguities or conflicts, what do you think solar is going to say, well, your county attorney drafted the ordinance? As part of their. So um I feel like it should go about more like any other. Media or not mediated, but negotiated sort of transaction where they can pay their lawyers to come up with a proposed ordinance. Send it to us, we look it over, and then if we have questions about it, then Justin would review it. Not where he's sitting, spending hours and hours writing it or going on, you're saying they're providing you templates, but why don't they provide you with an actual proposed draft? That you only need to review?
They do, there was a conversation I had with NextTerror's attorney about a month ago, and he said he would originate. Originates some documents, and then I'd look over them, and then we'd make changes, then we'd have meetings over it. What Cassie just described is how it takes place, it's usually they start with it because it can be solar companies are in many different counties now, so they kind of have a template on how these things go. And then it comes to us, we make changes, again, we have tech merit committee hearings, we're with the with the engineer, yeah, members of each board. That is exactly what happens, um. Yeah, you know, construction against the against the drafter, again, in this case, it does usually originate with the solar company, but there's significant inputs, one. Exception of that was the road use agreement, because names that are road use affidavit, NextTerror did a road use agreement, and so we kind of jointly drafted that. Again, what what the county has to shoulder that burden or whether, because it's not just me either, right, it sounds I'm sitting here saying me. Sounds kind of selfish, but I'm also thinking about engineer because, and Bob shouldn't do it, all that work that you're doing has to be compensated somehow. Whether it's compensated, compensation coming for the county or compensation come from the county that's since reimbursed on a cost basis. It does not matter to me, from a personal standpoint, it matters to me as someone who's again trying to not have to make you a portion. County funds for that purpose, that you're not reimbursed. But I I do agree with Cass, the pixel one half does. There's always going to be, it's on journey, it's like, one way or the other, they're going to do it in the way that they do it, I'm not ever going to convince anybody. That dead set against solar or the expansion solar, maybe not against solar, they just don't want to see more acres, I'm not going to convince them otherwise, you guys aren't going to convince them otherwise.
I think I think the solar management itself, based on what Larry just told us, is making an admission of some sort of apparent impropriety if they're. Uncomfortable with making these payments, and that right there tells you.
I think the fact that we're having this discussion on the record and over the meeting is is eliminating any, well, not maybe eliminating the parents' impropriety, but I think. Lays the point that's being made, that something underhanded is being done here, again, this is happening in. Half a dozen counties across across the state sometimes. In a less blatant manner, um.
And and I think actually we're not here to debate um whether how we're going to pay the funds, we're just, I mean, whether we're going to, you know. Right, we're just going to set, voting tonight to set up the fund. I'll make the motion that we accept the ordinance as read, um and establish the fund to receive the funds to be able to pay the solar companies. For a second. I'll second in the standpoint of openness, that's the way we think it has to be. That's how I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, I, I'll just take a little call movement since there's some opposition, I.
I.
I. Nay.
Uh for the record on the recording, five, four, two against. Um I'll pass this around so you can um vote with your signature. As far as when they're passing, I think it's been a pretty long meeting. Um the shortfall in uh fund twelve twenty-two, I feel like that would be a been one from. Turning out permission from the commission on that. Uh fund number twelve twenty-two, um it's uh. The nine one one, so we we had discussed in the past. Right, like this is just the the shortfall in the budget itself, and that's one of the reasons why we've been talking to the state about. It'd be nice to dedicate a little more money into nine one one, at least Mr. Bahatchi, you were there when I mentioned that, he said. Couple of months I've been adjusted in thirty years, so my complaint about nine one one not being adjusted in twenty years, even my my argument on that, but um.
What's the.
Right now, the revenue is uh. Thirty-three thousand essentially.
And it's based off. That's a, I'm just in my, in the last.
By the parents, we've kind of resolved how we're going to develop working out for next year, but you know, for this year, it just makes uh. Sense to me, since this is a loss revenue category, we just make a lot of sense to come from there, and you know, is there any opposition from your board?
I'll I'll make that motion.
You have a motion, okay, um from Bruce, is there a second?
Can you repeat the motion?
Yes. Uh the motion was.
To accept the uh paying the the shortfall for the nine one one.
Are you interested in a second? Second from Kay, is there any further discussion? Let's take a vote, all those in favor, I. Is there any opposed? Tony and Cassie, was that a gay or a naked on that? Um and then I'm going to admit here, we have the county travel defense policy. I'm not sure why.
That was me, I brought it up at our need.
Okay.
I would like to adjust a few things. I think so having a workshop, we all took a copy of it, like you have an idea, Bruce. Hour or whoever.
It's hard to take and and look at it, okay, it's mine, have you got any particular thoughts, Donnie, what what you?
Yeah, just uh. How far we traveled before the pain and a little more on the motel. It's not critical.
Two thousand thirteen. I appreciate your input. Anyone else, the submission happening, more business? Does anybody else on the county have any other business for the council? Anybody in the audience? I don't see very many smiles out there, so maybe some people aren't, does anybody want to make a motion during, I might make some people smile.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, motion, second, all those in favor, I.